Good evening. I will now call to order the Chesterfield Township Planning Commission meeting on April 22, 2024. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is true to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will call the roll. Mr. Miller is here. Mr. LaBelle?
Here.
Mr. Demink?
Here.
Mr. Leonard?
Here.
Mr. Renaud?
Here.
Mr. Jaworski?
Here.
Mr. Klonowski?
Here.
Mr. Carr?
Here.
Mr. Brokaw?
Here.
All here. Approval of the minutes for the prior meeting. I will make a motion to approve the minutes of March 19, 2024. We have a motion by Mr. Miller, supported by?
Supported.
Supported by Mr. Renaud. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approval of the agenda. I will make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Miller, supported by Mr. LaBelle. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Next item is new on our agenda. It's public comments. You'll have a three-minute time limit and because that public hearing's already been held on the gas, I mean on the car wash, we're not going to be able to answer anything. So just have three minutes to speak. So anytime you want to go up.
Good evening. Bob Kirk, 19-500 Hall Road, Clinton Township, Michigan. I'm here with the Mr. C's group tonight. I was not at the last meeting, however, I did review the minutes and I also watched the video. So I submitted a letter with regard to our objections. I know the public hearing was closed, but we really couldn't respond until that public hearing was done. I mean, I heard some comments, some of the commissioners, so none of our people could respond to those. So I'd like to just really quickly kind of go through our objections. Everything that was talked about virtually was with regard to the site plan. What we object to is no comments were made with regard to special land use approval. Special land use approvals are by statute and they're like really unique uses that you really want to be protective of. Fast foods with maybe call boxes next to residential. And yet, in this case, car washes, you've listed it as that. So you have this protected area and your ordinance requires that there's certain factors that must be found and you must affirmatively find each one. And one of the commissioners says I'm not here to judge what should be there. The ordinance requires you to find that some of these items are, that all of the items are met. For example, that has to be such location character that'll be in harmony with the rest of the surrounding area. In this case, I think Mr. Catalfe already was at the meeting and explained to you where his location is, less than 600 feet away. This will not be in harmony with orderly development of that area. With, also with regard to that is traffic has to be taken into account. And one of the items I'd like to point out is car washes in Michigan aren't even sales days. We have days that there's snow, there's salt, and the next day sunny and they're packed. So now we have two of those car washes within 600 feet of each other. Potential car, potential traffic issues, those have not been addressed. The most important ones are with regard to number five and six, and those go into need for the services and also necessary for the public convenience. I reviewed the petitioner's application. There's no mention of any findings of any need for it. They talk about, I think, 78,000 cars and that's all they say. They have not addressed that. There's no facts for you to rely on to find affirmatively that these are needed for public convenience. I cited in my letter, I'm not sure if you're going to look at it or not, that the Car Wash Magazine estimates you need one car wash for 20,000 to 25,000 people. We have eight within two miles of this area. So we're oversaturating the market. In addition, you can't cause injury to related properties. In this case, we get a second car wash, one of them might not make it. Now you've got a car wash building, pretty difficult to reuse, repurpose. And what does it do to the property values, Mr. Catalfe? It possibly could sink from there. For those reasons, I think you have to address all the items set forth in your special land use. You have to make findings and find affirmatively. And based on what's been found, I don't think you can do that.
Thank you.
Hi, Robert Surgot, 50515 Bay Run North. The Gom County Economic Development Team's called 23 Mile to Next M-59. And what that means is we got a plan for the future and I think we need to look at district buffering. We just had sunny days mentioned. People drive like jerks on sunny days. Do we need a bunch of cars pulling out of a car wash all at once on 23 Mile, which is already horrible traffic? So you don't put two gas stations next to each other. You don't put two drive-throughs next to each other. We need to think about 23 Mile and have separation between like-minded businesses. I look at car washes like I do drive-throughs. You don't want them next to each other because it just creates a gridlock and a headache on 23 Mile. And anyone that's driven 23 Mile realizes it's pretty much rush hour right now. So district buffering is something that we need to take a hard look at if we're gonna, as we progress with new businesses. We also need to protect 23 Mile because if it is developing, we do not need a vacant car wash. And I don't see how one's going to survive if you have two next to each other. So thank you and have a good day.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Vito Catalfe with Mr. C's Car Wash. I'm not here for any mercy. I just want the rules followed and I'm being competitive right now. People say, oh, you're looking for mercy. I'm being competitive right now. The nine rules that are special use are not being done. There are, some people don't even know that there's another ClearView and a Titleway that's been approved. They don't even know that one's, those two are coming in. It's saturated and they do the same thing Mr. does. We all do the same thing. We need another one 598 feet from me? No, it shouldn't be. And as far as any services they offer, they're already all over us. We've got plenty of the same services. And alls I want is, you know, every one of these must find affirmatively to the following standards. And I want those three addressed and they should be. And nobody here with a straight face can say that you put a car wash, I don't care who it is, 600 feet away from another car wash, that value of that property is not worth as much. And it says right here that the proposed shall not cause substantial injury to the value of the other property. Alls I want is these three standards and the rules followed. That's all I want. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? There is a sign-in sheet that you should be signing into on the table there.
John Speaker, Chesterfield Township. I am in total objection of the car wash, the new car wash coming into the township. And I'm, I'm in objection to it because I currently deal with a board every two weeks and I'm talking about the current township board that has trouble following their own policies and rules. They only follow and enforce what they want to follow and enforce. Out of the nine rules, three of them, this new car wash doesn't meet the standard on three of the rules that were brought before you. So that should be an automatic denial. And just to give you an example, Jets Pizza, you try to come in here and put a Jets Pizza in here, Jets Pizza can't build another Jets Pizza within 538 feet of another Jets Pizza. They've got a five or six mile radius that they have to be apart before they can put another Jets Pizza. We already have a committed business owner, Mr. C's, that took a chance when they bought that dilapidated Joe's Car Wash and spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to bring it up to standard for this community. Another thing is, and I said this at the last township meeting or at the last planning meeting, Chesterfield, everybody I talked to is known for gas stations, storage facilities, and fast food. I mean, look at the lousy job that was done with the Starbucks on 23 Mile Road. I mean, it backs traffic up anywhere from a quarter to a half a mile sometimes. It's ridiculous. And most importantly, how can you even agree to anything like this without a traffic study? A traffic study is one of the most important elements to see if our infrastructure can even handle the demand of another car wash. So until every dot is dotted and every T is crossed, which in this case it hasn't, you guys have no other choice but to deny it and do your job. And Mr. Demink, you have to lead this board in that direction. As the liaison to planning, it's your job to bring this group together and, and let them see, you know, the direction that they have to go. And again, like Mr. Kirk said, you guys, it doesn't meet the standard. So, and, and the one thing I don't buy is, you know, you know, having other businesses come in and the stronger of the two will survive. No. The one thing I didn't hear from the new car wash was what their monthly fees were going to be at the last planning meeting. So, and I can guarantee you that they're going to be a lot higher than what Mr. C's is and the quality's not going to be there either. So again, I totally disagree and I'm asking this planning board to deny the petitioner's request.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Christopher Perick, Chesterfield. I did not come to the last meeting, but I did watch it on, online. And I didn't hear anything about a traffic study, so I'm not sure if one was done. But I did remember one of the representatives for Mr. Car Wash did say when cars were exiting and they were going to go west, that they would probably have to queue up in the center turn lane because they're not going to be able to get into the through lane going west. I've never seen that. There's, I don't know if you can have an exemption from that because that is not a lawful vehicle maneuver to queue up in that center lane and drive until you can merge right. You can't even do it now without the car wash there. In fact, there's always a string of semis turning, turning into Speedway using that left turn lane. So I don't know how that's going to happen. Everybody's going to have to go east, go down and turn around if they want to go west on 23 Mile Road. So traffic study would be nice to see if that's even possible to make a, make a turn going west on a 23 Mile Road during rush hour. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mike Rainer, Jack Grovelane. I just think, you know, one more voice on this traffic issue. It's really like ridiculous, but we're not really going to know how bad it's going to be until Chick-fil-A opens. Talk about a traffic study and being prepared for the traffic issues that we already have. Wait till Chick-fil-A opens. At least that's on the west side of Grashit, but you know, I don't know. Do we not really think at all about how our already ridiculous traffic situation is when we're going to aggravate it once again? And the other thing too is this gentleman took a, a really ramshackle piece of junk called a car wash, redid it into a very acceptable, you know, efficient car wash. And like we've, I won't repeat all of the other objections other than those that I've emphasized, but here's a gentleman that, you know, fixed up one of the existing, you know, eyesores. And so, you know, what sort of compensation is he getting for trying to contribute to the community? Talk about traffic. I happened to be on my corner yesterday and talking about traffic, there were only two accidents in the 45 minutes I was there on Grashit near 23 Mile Road. So I think we have to take these traffic issues seriously because there have been very, very serious accidents, as we all know. And I know that the car wash is, you know, is considerably east of 23 in Grashit. I understand that. But the traffic, as others have pointed out, is bad there as well. So let's give this guy an opportunity to, to do the right thing. And I think doing the right thing should always guide us in whatever our decision is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I will bring it back up to the next agenda item. Number seven is public hearings. We have no public hearings tonight. Number eight is regular agenda. Our Secretary Rick will do the reviews. Mr. LaBelle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item A is Mr. Car Wash Site Plan 2024-01. Special Land Use C3, 1.28 acres, south of 23 Mile Road, east of Donner Road. The parcel ID is 15-09-21-101-027. The address is 29300 23 Mile Road. The public hearing was closed and tabled on 3/19. Ms. Stephanie, you want to continue on with Giffel's review, please?
Sure. Thank you. So commissioners, tonight in your packets, you have a letter dated March 28. I'll note that we received additional supplementary plans since then. And so I'll walk you through the letter and, and point out those changes and some other things to look out for. Overall, tonight, the, the, or if not tonight, at some point, the Planning Commission is tasked to approve or deny the special land use requests in the site plan. So two separate approvals or denials. As you probably noticed, the plans are similar to what you've seen before. However, there's been a change in the location of the various services. On the west side of the site, there's now the queuing lanes. In the middle is the vacuum stalls and on the east side, excuse me, in the middle is the vacuum stalls and on the west side is the car wash building. The new plans also have an attendant hut and that's in addition to the pay kiosks that were previously, previously proposed as well as the office that was previously proposed. So at the bottom of page one, I just want to note, there's some required information that's still missing and revisions. The applicant will need to provide M. approval of the proposed access drive from 23 Mile Road. And while they did submit a photometric plan, there is one part that's out of compliance and I'll talk about that a little bit later in, in the letter, but that can be reviewed administratively. The items for Planning Commission consideration are approval or denial of the location of the canopy and pay kiosks and attendant stations, as well as their building materials and the surrounding landscaping. This is required that the Planning Commission approve these structures in order for them to be permitted in the front or side yard. The Planning Commission may also wish to discuss any vehicular or pedestrian concerns on site and if the, and discuss with the applicant if the number of queuing spaces is sufficient. And then what will happen if there is more demand than queuing space. And this was discussed, I believe, at the last meeting, but the cross-access agreement should be provided prior to final engineering approval as well. There are two things that I noted when I was reviewing the new plans, actually three things that are not on this list. The first is a discussion of the acceptability of the screening. The applicant is currently proposing an eight-foot tall wall along the south and southwest borders of the lot. The, and in a lot of the landscaping areas, both at the south end and, and the north end of the lot, they are proposing two-to-three-inch stone ground covering, which I apologize, this was actually in the last set of plans that were reviewed for the last meeting, but I didn't catch it until this time around. So you may wish to discuss if, with the applicant, if that should be just typical landscaping and ground cover. And then finally, for discussion with the applicant is the location of the parking lot trees. The parking lot trees are on the west side of the lot, on the north end, along the queuing lane, to the west of the queuing lane. So they're not actually in the parking area, which would be the, the middle of the site with the vacuum stalls. So moving on, the, the gist of the site is the same in terms of the size of the car wash, the car wash tunnel, the number of vacuum stalls, they're still 19. And then the having the pay kiosk with the canopy. So, so that's all what you've seen before and what you're familiar with. They do have a dumpster enclosure proposed at the south end of the site and they've added a loading and a loading area at the south end of the site as well. At the top of page three, you'll see all the district dimensional standards are met. And at the bottom of page three, we start to get into the, the uses. There are, I'll note to, this might also be a point for Planning Commission discussion, is the stacking spaces in the, in the bailout. There are 18 stacking spaces located in the three lanes west of the property and then they funnel into a single lane that goes to the car wash tunnel. And that provides 31, or excuse me, 13 additional spaces for a total of 31 spaces. The top of page four talks about building materials, which nothing's been changed since the last submission. However, there are new accessory structures. As I noted, there's a canopy proposed in the queuing area on the west side and that's 16 feet tall. There's also a proposed 50 foot square, 55 square foot attendant building on the south side of the vacuum stalls. And both buildings meet the setbacks for buildings and the materials match what's proposed for the main buildings. The, let's see, the middle of page four talks about vehicular parking. That's pretty much all the same that we saw last time. The bottom of page four talks about ingress and egress. The revised plans show a single entrance. It's three lanes, one ingress and two egress. This is at the northwestern part of the site. The one, one egress lane is for right-hand turns, the other for left. And we still are waiting M. approval from the applicant on that. Let's see, the top of page five discusses the drive-throughs. And so the applicant has provided the, the amount of queuing that's required. They've provided a 10-foot landscape setback from the stacking lanes and the lanes are designated via arrows. The, they do have a bailout lane approximately midway along the stacking area that meets the requirements of the ordinance. But you'll see as the, as the cars move from the three-lane queuing to one lane, as it gets to the very south end of the site, there's a gate where they can enter into the vacuum area. The Planning Commission may wish to discuss with the applicant how that gate opens and if there's any delays, if, if an employee will need to come over and let someone through or not. The rest of the, of page five is pretty straightforward until we get to, to the screening requirements at the bottom. Here, the applicant has proposed, in my letter, it says 180-foot long, six-foot tall wall. The site, the, the new plans show a 268-foot wall, long wall. That's eight-foot feet tall. And I'll note that the ordinance doesn't have a minimum height requirement for the wall. So the Planning Commission may wish to discuss if they, excuse me, it says a six-foot height, but it doesn't say at least six feet and doesn't cap it at six feet. So you may want to discuss if eight-foot is what you would like to see there. And then again, just noting that the, the, the ground coverage is proposed to be stone in quite a bit of the, the landscaped area at the south and north ends of the site. And then finally, as I noted before, the parking lot landscaping, the trees are located west of the queuing area instead of in the vacuum stalls. The Planning Commission can discuss if that location's acceptable for those trees. And then finally, just a note so that the Planning Commission knows, the lighting can be reviewed administratively, but, and for the applicant's information, it will need to be revised as the southwest end, there's illumination that exceeds the maximum. So I'm happy to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? Were they going to put a presentation together, Jonathan? Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I do have printouts of the, of the presentation if you're interested in having those. Again, good evening. Chris Campbell with Mr. Car Wash. Slide, please. So I'll try and keep it brief. Stephanie did a nice job touching on many of the changes that we made. We did hear your comments from a couple of weeks ago, so we did implement changes to the site. You'll see those on the lit, or on the screen right there. To the left is the old configuration of the site. To the right is the new configuration. Starting at the top, we did combine those two driveways into a single driveway. So we have one inbound, two outbound, one for left turns, one for right. We're still working with M. on their approval, but generally they are in agreement with this kind of configuration. We did move the, the parts and pieces around a little bit. So the POS lanes moved to the west side of the property. The self-serve vacuums moved to the center and the tunnel moved to the east side of the property. We added that bypass lane halfway through the POS lanes. And then to answer Stephanie's question about that internal bypass lane, once you get through the POS, there's what's called a gate loop. And so it's essentially kind of a big magnet in the ground. When your vehicle pulls over that, the gate automatically opens, your vehicle drives through, and then there's another loop on the other side that, once it doesn't sense that magnetism, it closes the gate. We shifted the vacuum enclosures north and east. That benefits the residential to the southwest by moving those noise producers further away. We extended the site wall another 65 feet approximately north, so the entirety of the residential adjoining property lines have that site wall. With respect to that site wall's height, we can make 60 decibels at that residential line with a six-foot wall. We chose to go with an eight-foot wall, believing that, you know, any bit more that we can provide will help those residents to the southwest. We added that loading zone. You can see that kind of on the southeast side of the site there. And then to achieve 60 decibels at the southeast portion of the property, we did have to add a 10-foot sound wall at the entrance to the tunnel. Slide. One point about the queuing for the pre-POS canopy. So currently, we have about 18 vehicles. That canopy is set in a location that is outside of all of the set, all of the required setbacks. If the commission would allow us to move that canopy as far south as we can while still staying out of the DTE easement for the electrical line, then we would, that would allow us to get some additional queuing before customers go through that POS terminal. then we would, that would allow us to get some additional queuing before customers go through that POS terminal. But currently, the entire queuing is, I think Stephanie said 31, I was a little more conservative, said 27. But we, you know, we believe we have plenty of queuing. There was a question in staff's report about how do we handle those busy days or if queuing gets excessive? With, with our equipment in the tunnel, we can control the speed at which vehicles move through that tunnel. So if we are finding a, a busy day that we have a higher volume, we can increase that speed and, which just ultimately just increases the throughput through the tunnel. Next slide. There was a, an ask to get additional monitoring points. Weather did not cooperate with us, but we were able to get somebody out last Friday. We got additional data from about 7:00 AM until 5:00, 6:00 PM, actually, I think it was, before we had a rain event that didn't allow us to continue measuring. But you can see here, and I know it's a little difficult to see, I apologize. On the northeast corner, there's a blue pin that was one of our initial monitoring points. And on the southwest corner is another blue pin, that was another of our initial monitoring points. You'll notice that halfway down each property line, there's a yellow pin. Those were the new monitoring points that we took. I, I do have our acoustical consultant here who can address any questions with this. The, the crux of this is that at the south property line, the quietest it ever got was 59.6, 0.7, something like that in the overnight hours. And then as you've moved further north on the property towards 23 Mile, it progressively gets louder. So about midway, you're right around 65 decibels. And then you're as high as about 77 decibels at those north monitoring points. Slide. JT, why don't I invite you up? You can talk a little bit about the, the monitoring piece. And I know that you, if you have any questions, he's, he's going to be the guy to answer.
Thank you. My name is JT Stevens with LSA. So what you see here, so the original data gathered back in October, what we did was we presented the range of the daytime levels at those two loca, two locations. LT1, the top row, is closer to 23 Mile Road. LT2 is down near the southern property line. We present the ranges, but the data point to look at more closely is LT1, the minimum level. So we're designing to the quietest hour. So because the noise level is less than the standard of 60, we are designing the car wash to meet that standard. In reality, during the day, that noise level will fluctuate higher. So there would be an argument that you could make more noise, but we're conservatively designing to the quietest hour. For the western and the eastern property line, what we did with the original data is interpolated between the two points and estimated what those levels would be, taking into consideration the shielding of the existing buildings and the distance. And so those are the levels, the 65.5 and the 73.8, which are on the western property line, just north of the, the wall, along the queuing lanes. And then on the east side, near the tunnel exit. Next slide. So what you'll see here is this is the updated data. Again, data points are in the table. LT1, similar to the original LT1. LT2, similar. LT3 is on the west. LT4 is on the, on the east. The bullet points on the bottom are what are most important to me doing the noise study. As you'll see, 1, 2, and 3, the data was within .2 or .4 of the previous data, which basically just says the assumptions we made in the prior study, which directed the wall heights, which directed the tunnel entrance wall, are accurate today as well. I think there was concern about getting data points on the east and west. This shows that the noise source from 23 Mile Road is the dominant source and the propagation of those noise levels was accurate. Lastly, LT4, that noise level is generally the same or almost exactly the same as what was predicted prior. I don't know if you have another, one more slide? Okay. And then, so again, just to summarize, the sets of data agree with one another. The measured noise levels last week matched the interpolated data from October. And all the recommendations to reduce noise levels would remain as is.
Thank you. And, so I don't have any other slides, but I did want to address a couple of the comments real quickly that were brought up. There were a number of folks that mentioned traffic. We did have a traffic analysis completed. Our peak, our trips do not exceed 100, so that doesn't, so because it's less than 100, we're not required to get a full traffic study done. But a traffic memo was completed and submitted with our application. As far as monthly fees go, we're pretty competitive. I mean, we, if we weren't competitive, we wouldn't be in business. So this particular store, for our unlimited wash club, will probably be in the, the range of $20 to $40, depending on the level of wash that you get. And then if you just want to purchase an individual wash, that can be anywhere from 10 to, 10 to $25, $30. Again, depending, depending on the level of wash that you want. There was a comment about the property values in this area as well. I think it's important to note that this section of Chesterfield Township is seeing some, some gentrification. A lot of people don't like that word, but it's, it's what, it's what's happening. The underlying land value is worth more than the buildings that sit on them. It's precisely the reason that Sheet, Sheets purchased an existing gas station and is tearing it down to build a new one. It's precisely the reason that we're looking at buying an existing restaurant and tearing it down to build something else. Our seller here, when he was looking to sell the property, the offers that came in were from car wash users. There wasn't a viable restaurant user that wanted to take the building and redevelop it as a restaurant. And so I think to, to hear that by bring, by Mr. Carwash coming in, it's going to hurt the value of another, you know, a neighboring business, or they're not going to be able to succeed. None of us have a crystal ball. I can't tell you the future. You know, we don't know that. And to say that, you know, the, again, the value in the building is, is, there likely isn't any. It's in the val, the value's in the land at this point. We talked about the wall, parking lot trees. I'm fine to work with staff to get those relocated so that it's amenable. But other one, other than that, I think that's all I have. Again, my team and I are here to answer any questions that you have. Oh, do you have any, one more thing?
Yeah, so Kurt Geiger with Excelon Jr. I was just going to touch on the tree aspect that was mentioned tonight. And their location not within that vacuum area. And the recommendation would be is that obviously that area is narrow. So then, taking into consideration what that tree survival is, yes, we could put them there. But it's not as likely to have those trees survive. And then obviously, from a general operation on a car wash, that more leaf canopy dropping in an area that the cars are actually coming out clean and trying to be vacuumed and cleaned versus on the perimeter, they wouldn't be necessarily required on the perimeter on that western edge. And so to actually buffer better between the different properties, it would be recommended that that would be the, the route gone versus bringing them interior. But understanding that, as pointed out, there is that subjectivity to the code, so. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll bring it back up to the commission for comments. Mr. Brokhardt?
Thank you for coming back. Thank you for the work you've done. I have a few questions for you.
Sure.
I'll start by saying I think you've done a nice job acoustically. I, I appreciate you retesting. I understand 77 dB along 23 Mile Road, you'll never get to 60. The traffic alone won't allow that. But what you've done along the, the neighboring side at 60 dB is appreciated. The people who live in that neighborhood don't want loud noises. You muffled the vacuums, you moved the vacuums, you put in the barrier walls. That's pretty good. I have a few questions, though. Can you describe the bailout lane process once a customer has paid? How, how do they get out once they're in there? There is, there's a space, they could be trapped in there. Can you describe that for me?
Yeah, so again, the way that our, you know, our store operates, that's a continuous conveyor inside. So we have a, an employee that's just inside the tunnel. He guides vehicles onto the conveyor, hits the send button and sends them on their way. So it's, you know, it's a, that group of cars is kind of a steady movement through there. So if somebody for some reason did want to leave, they would obviously have to just wait until those cars in front of it moved and then it bails out. As I said, they pull up to that gate, automatically opens, they drive through, and then it closes behind them.
How much time would you estimate that would take? I just paid my, I just paid my tab and I need to go.
Yeah.
What's it take?
On a busy day, maybe a minute. You know, our goal from the time you hit the site to the time you're through the tunnel is three minutes.
Okay, thank you. You guys moved to two-inch stone rather than vegetation, like trees and bushes along that, that neighboring edge there? Why, it was 10 feet. Why is it going to be all stone and, and not vegetation, trees, plants, that sort of thing?
I mean, if, once again, we're open to recommendations by commission of what they would like to see there. But in general, on the car wash sites, back to the tree droppings or whatever, trying to keep a clean site from the aspect of we're trying to have clean cars go off the site. So the more grass you have on there, the more clippings you're going to have and the more that's introduced. Even in this case, what you're bringing into the wash, they do a reclaim system. The cleaner that you can give it in there, the better chance that we can reclaim that water and use it from that aspect.
I would also add that, you know, contrary to what many people might believe, although we do use a lot of water, we do try to be good stewards of water. So the, if we can have more hardscape that doesn't require watering, that doesn't require that kind of ongoing maintenance, it's, it's easier to just operate with.
Thank you.
Mr. Renault?
So first of all, I apologize for not being at the last meeting. I was out of town unavoidably, but did watch the meeting. And I will tell you, I've actually been reading and struggling with this, actually, this very topic since my return to town. For the applicant, I do have a couple of questions. As you know, you're applying for special land use. There are nine topics with regards to the special land use that have to be met. In order for us to say yes, this meets all our criteria. And there are, there's one, I'm, there's one I'm really struggling with and one I could go either way on. I'll start with what I'll think is, what I think is the easier one, which is 6.2. B. 2, which actually indicates that the pro, the proposed use should not, shall be of a nature that will make vehicular and pedestrian traffic no more hazardous than is normal for the district involved. Now, I can tell you, I have the distinct pleasure of living directly in that area for the past 15 years. And that trying to turn left is near impossible, virtually any time of day. And I am somewhat concerned that with it being a car wash, I can tell you, I know the traffic that comes and goes, especially depending on the weather. Do you have any idea what the, you know, the number of cars you think potentially might be trying to turn left out of there as opposed to turning right? I mean, that could be a real detriment to the area.
Yeah, I, unfortunately, I don't have that information on hand. I do recall that when the traffic memo was done, the difference between the existing use and our use was, was very small over the course of the day. What that exact number is, I don't know. I, I want to say it was like 40 to 50 vehicles a day, but that's a number that I'd have to get back to you on.
And what's, on any given day, on average, like how many vehicles would you think would be coming through your, through your car wash?
Through your store, yeah. So on a typical day, you know, we're going to say around 500 plus or minus. Obviously, a busy sunny day, we can have more. A cold rainy day, we're going to have a lot less. And I would add that I think, you know, in its existing site today, you have two full-access driveways. You can turn left, you can turn right. We, we heard the comments last week. We did condense those down to the single driveway. Still working, again, still working with MDOT to get the geometry of it all. But I think reducing it, reducing it down to that single driveway will certainly help make traffic on the site safer.
And the unfortunate reality, for those who either like it or don't like it, and traffic's just, it's going to be, it's just Chesterfield. We're expanding still, it's going to happen.
And I can't, you know, I can't change 23 Mile. I wish I could, but I can, I can do my little part by giving you the driveway.
And that is what it is, there's not a lot we can do with that. I'm just curious. But the one that I'm really actually getting stuck on, though, it's actually 6.2. B. 6, actually, which is probably the shortest requirement of all of them. But state specifically, the proposed use is necessary for the public convenience at that proposed location. And for the life of me, I am just trying to figure out how that is the best location potentially for a car wash.
Yeah, I guess I would counter, and I brought this up last time and you maybe saw this on the, the video, the Chick-fil-A further down, you know, just to the west of Greshit and 23 Mile. It's my understanding that that was a special land use as well. And there's 15 to 20 restaurants within a stone's throw of that. So to, you know, this, this country was kind of founded on that, that competition.
Yeah, no, and I don't disagree with that part. Though, though there's not a Chick-fil-A right next door to it either, would be my counter to that one. So.
Well, and, and we would argue that, you know, to say that we are the same as Mr. Sees is, you know, all, underlying, yes, we both wash cars. But we believe we have two very different business models. Just like, you know, a Chick-fil-A is different than a McDonald's. You know, they both sell food, but they're, they're different in what they do and how they do it.
Okay, no, that's fair enough, thank you.
Mr. Carr?
Thanks. I'll start with the, the site plan itself. I, I do think the revised site plan, I do appreciate you taking our comments last time serious because I think your new layout is much better. I mean, obviously, the bailout lane, I was one of them that definitely wanted to see a dedicated bailout lane. But I, I do believe with those two, I mean, I think it's a nice compromise, you know. So I'm pretty comfortable with your bailout lanes. I think the entry and exits are probably about the best we can do for this location. So I appreciate that as well. I, you know, turning left's always going to be a challenge. But 23 Mile Road, whether we like it or not, still has potential to grow. So a lot of businesses are going to keep coming out of 23 and everyone's going to keep asking for traffic studies. But the reality is that there's a lot more throughput that, that five lanes can take. So this isn't going to impact that, you know, any worse than it is today. So I don't, I think that's, that was a good solution. Your canopies, I think, are good. I didn't have any issue with the trees not being in the, because I figured that's what you did, is you put them on the outside because of that. So, which makes sense. So I'm, I'm, you know, my main thing is that you have the quantity of trees. Because I'm, you know, I, I do believe in the green thumb. You know, we have to be good stewards and so, you know, so I don't have an issue with the trees. I thought the landscaping plan was, was done well and tastefully. In regards to stone, I actually know why you did the stone too where you did it. You did it along all the walls, grass wouldn't grow there anyways. So I had no issue with that, other than along 23 Mile Road, I think that needs to be grass. So that should not be stone. There's no reason for that to be stone. Like I said, I understood the southeast, the southwest, and the south end because your walls are there and I don't think you're going to get much growth, which is assuming why you did that there. And I understand why you did the narrow islands and strips because you're not going to grow much there. And, you know, with the trees, trying to avoid the trees, I understand all that. But everything that's on the north end, I think, needs to be grass to, you know, just promote that natural look versus the stone. So, and then the rest of the stuff, I think, again, we addressed last time. And, you know, I think it's all tastefully done and I think you did a pretty good job. I know the hot topic is the land, special land use. And so it is a tough one. So I'm still thinking through it myself. And mostly for the same reasons that Ms. Renault pointed out is that, you know, pretty much just the one is a questionable area that I know myself, as a commissioner, I'm still thinking through. But I can see both sides of the story. So, you know, just, all I can say is, yeah, that's, that is probably one of the sticking points from our end. I think from a site plan perspective, I think it's well done. You know, it fits well within that site. So those are my comments.
Thank you.
And if you're interested in making grass condition of approval for that north area, I'm absolutely fine putting that in.
Mr. Jaworski? Mr. Klonowski?
Yes, just to give some, on this, on the site plan or the special land use. In, in early 2000, we had a lot of strip malls coming in. And I mean, there was one after another. And we, we discussed it amongst ourselves. And, and the, the planner at the time said, look, if they meet the requirements, you cannot deny them the use. Now, in the special land use... special land uses, the proposal use, this is the one that kind of gets me, "The proposed use shall not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the vicinity in which it is to be located, and will not be detrimental to existing or other permitted land uses." And it almost gives you the impression that it, that we're picking winners or lose, and losers here, and we don't want to go down that road. I guess the question is, and I know there was some comments about the economic factors involved, is that something, and I guess I could direct this to council, can we consider economic factors? My, my opinion is land use is what we look at.
People don't usually complain about not being able to hear me. They complain about other things. You're correct. You cannot choose one business over another. And whether or not the market is saturated, whether or not one business is going to make more money than another, is not something you're looking at. You're looking at the land use in general.
But you can see how people would get confused because of the language within the special land use.
I certainly can.
So, it's that's, that, I think that's something we need to look at and kind of clarify and clean up in the future, do a little review on that. No further questions or comments.
Mr. Leonard?
Yeah, this is, I've been doing this a long time, and, and this one was, this is a tough one, and I've listened to everything from the audience, everything from fellow board members, and I agree with everybody. So, I'm, I'm, I'm still kind of working through this. I'm on the fence with it, but I'm one vote out of, out of nine, and sometimes we all agree, sometimes we don't. And so, I'm not sure which way this is going to go, but I, I do have, I do have some concerns about, and this goes back to the economic part, is seeing an empty building, a commercial building. We've got a few in the township. Not, not a, a large amount of empty buildings, but we do have some, and so that's one of the things, but that's an economic thing. And I do believe that the car washes do, even though they both wash cars, there's, there's kind of a couple of different things going on there with one car wash and another. Years ago, when I was younger, I, I managed a car wash, and by far, the wintertime was where all the gravy is. That's where all the money's made. And there was so many cars that we used to do in the winter, that you could have had a car washed across the street, and one next door, and still done a lot of cars. And so, I struggle with that. Of course, back then, they were a dollar twenty-five for a car wash, so... But, you know, summertime, everybody kind of, you know, the car wash business, you, you just kind of get through the week. But, so, you know, it's still growing. 23 Mile's still growing, and the decision to always do the right thing pertains to everybody. The, the businesses, the residents, the township, the, the function of these new businesses, and so, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. LaBelle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. All the questions that have been asked, is what I was going to ask, so I'm not going to ask them again. Just, just a couple of clarifications. Where are we at with the eight-foot wall compared to the six-foot wall? Did we decide upon a six-foot wall? Did we decide upon an eight-foot wall? I personally don't have a problem with the eight-foot wall, but, you know, something we want to consider during the motion process. And I also agree with Mr. Carr. I think that the, the stone throughout the site is fine, other than along 23 Mile Road. I, I really do believe that there should be some kind of vegetation, grass, something like that. I, too, am struggling with it, and I appreciate what, what the residents have to say, and I certainly have been considering that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson, could you give us an interpretation of any of the SLU's criteria that might be needed or helpful to us?
In order, in order to approve the special land use, you need to find affirmatively as to all eight. And it, and your decision needs to be based on, you know, facts, figures, data that was presented at the public hearing, or provided to the commission prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Mr. Domingue?
I, too, this one's a rough one to do. I understand it's two car washes. Mr. Mister does one type, and as Mister, the owner of Mr. Sees says, they do it different. They do power washing, and the Will Wells, something that the other ones stated they don't do. They have one guy. You guys have a couple. Either way, you're two different types, but I understand also the location of the business. Also, it come, it was brought up by other commissioners, you know, there's restaurants around, and they're next to each other. Chesterfield is growing. There's a large piece of land right across the street from it. Who knows what's going to go there? That's, that was one time that was going to be a RV Camping World, and that deal fell through. You've got all-new condos, apartments being down the street across from the old Chesterfield Mall. So, I'm not sure if we're going to do a vote on this tonight, or if we're going to, you guys want to think about it. But at least with the planning commission, they're not elected officials. I'm the only one that's elected up here. They're residents, just like the residents, any residents out there. So, take the political swing out of it, because I'm only one vote. They're all residents. So, they're up here, and they don't have anything to gain or to lose, so they're independents on that part. One thing I'd like to ask from the people from Mr. Mister, is there any irrigation in the islands where the trees are? I didn't, I didn't happen to see it, like, say, when this came in. You can just say yes or no. That's all I want to know. There's no irrigation on any of the trees or any of the vegetation at all?
On vegetation, yes.
That's what I mean, like...
My intent is to irrigate all vegetation.
Otherwise, let's say it's not going to survive with all that concrete around. Okay. All right, that's all I got. It's up to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. Before I make the motion, though, I want to, I want to say a few words. I, I'm going to push the commission a little bit tonight. I know a lot of us are undecided, but I think it's, I think it's fair for the people to understand where we're going. I think it's fair for the petitioner to understand where we're headed. And so, I, I'm going to make a motion. And again, it's not easy, because we have to find that all eight of these, or all nine of these standards are met, or put simply, one that isn't. We've gotten feedback from the citizenry that five, six, and eight are of specific concern. My friend here, number six, is the one that bugs you the most. Well, I look for data, and I'm speaking for me. I'm not speaking for Mr. Domingue or anyone else here. So, this is me. This is how I think. For someone to say it's substantially harmful financially, I need data. I mean, anybody can say it's going to hurt me. Okay, is it substantial? I don't know how to say it is or not. If you give me data, I'm going to look at it, and I'll make a good decision based on that. I don't know how to say no to that item. And is it harmonious with the neighborhoods, with the acoustical work that they've done? The neighborhood should, should not know it's there acoustically. Now, maybe they don't like the, like, looks of the wall. I, I can't anticipate these things. I can't predict them. I think the petitioner has taken everything we've said to heart. I work in Grand Rapids, Michigan. There are seventeen of these car washes in Grand Rapids. Twenty-Eighth Street has multiple, but Twenty-Eighth Street's also the busiest street in the state of Michigan, and I've seen lots of traffic flow. We're not here to pick a winner or a loser. So, from my perspective, pending MDOT approval, pending a photometric analysis that's handled administratively, and some grass along 23 Mile Road, I'd like to make a motion regarding the special land use for Mr. Carwash, case number SP 2024-01, address 29300, 23 Mile Road, parcel 15-09-21-101-027. I'd like to recommend approval. I don't believe any of the special conditions have been, have, they have failed to meet any of them, and for this reason, I, I make a motion to approve. Do we have support? We have a motion by Mr. Brokhardt, supported by Mr. LaBelle. We'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Brokhardt?
Yes.
Mr. LaBelle?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard?
Nay.
Mr. Renault?
Nay.
Mr. Jaworski?
Deny.
Nay?
Would he say?
Nay.
Mr. Klonowski?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Miller is no. And Mr. Domingue? Five nos and four yeses. Motion is denied.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the motion to approve failed, but there needs to be another motion made. If the, if the commission intends to deny it, there needs to be a motion made to deny it. And the reasons for the denial would have to be stated.
Let me ask you a question. Is, is the reason for denial, is it good enough to say we voted five-four against?
No.
Oh?
No. The reasons for denial must be very specific.
Okay, then I'll be quiet.
Yes.
I will, I will make the motion to deny the petition, for particularly, I do not see how it satisfies section 6.2. B. 6. I just do not see that being satisfied.
So, failure to meet the standards.
Yeah, so failure, it doesn't meet all eight particulars for the special land use.
Did we do that backwards?
You have five eyes.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And four nos.
Jim, did you vote yes or no?
That was no.
Yeah, it was no to the motion.
Okay, so the motion is still denied.
Okay.
No, the motion is denied.
Correct.
Okay. So, we have next, number nine, presentations, reports, and discussions. Planners report, they have anything?
No, nothing from us. Thank you.
Planners, Mr. Kamet?
I'd like to thank all you guys for your opinions and votes. I know this was a tough one. It was a tough one for me, too. I'm sure we haven't heard the last of this. Just like if we would have passed it, we wouldn't have heard the last of it. That's why I wanted to stress to the people up here that this isn't a political thing. It's not like the other board, when there's seven elected people up here. They're all residents, just like you. They make, you know, they're taxpayers and everything else. I let these guys make their decision. Other people who sat up here during the terms, and sometimes tried to push their agenda, I don't do that. There's all, we got electricians, engineers, architects, farmers, builders. We got all kinds of guys up here. They're well-versed, and that's why I respect working with them, and I thank them for what they do. And again, thanks, guys.
Mr. Brokhardt? I think it was great that we, that we thought our, you know, thought against, I think it was great that we didn't agree. This one was tough. A nine-nothing vote, I don't think anybody expected that. But if anything, it demonstrates the independence. Somebody came up earlier tonight and said, "Do your job. Vote no." That's not my job. My job isn't to come up here and vote no, or deny things. My job is to consider all the facts, and have my other commissioners do the same thing, and then together, we make a decision. It went against what I wanted tonight. That's okay. It's best for the township when we do exactly what we did. So, I congratulate you guys. You guys did great tonight. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Renault?
One, thank you for that. Two, this might have been, this might have been the toughest review I think I've done in all my tenure here, and, yeah, this is, I'm sure this isn't the last we've heard of it, but I want to thank everyone for their efforts. It's just, but to Mr. Klonowski's statement earlier, we may have to revisit our special land use guidance, and maybe reword some of that. But thank you.
Mr. Carr? Nothing. Mr. Jaworski?
Nothing.
Mr. Klonowski?
No. Just to, just to kind of say again, that we need to kind of look at that special land use, and there's, there's a lot of, lot of interpretation. I, I realize, need some flexibility, but it does cause a lot of indecision, I guess is the best way to put it. So, that's it for me.
Mr. Leonard? Yeah, you know, everything that was said tonight made sense. I didn't think anything was bluster. I didn't think anybody just threw out a bunch of emotional comments. And so, everybody had a very valid point to make, and it was really tough for the township to turn down a $7 million investment into our community. But there's always a right way and a not-so-right way to, to get that investment. I, I certainly hope that if the Mr. Carwash decides to research and stay in his community, I think we probably could somewhere in this township handle a, a wash somewhere. But because of the special land use language, it, it, it wasn't there. And so, I, I hope maybe this will come back around, and, and everybody, the audience and the commission, and whoever else, is going to support it. Just, this one was tough, and it, and it just didn't, didn't seem right, and it didn't meet the, the requirements for the special land use.
Thank you. Mr. LaBelle?
First thing, typical question, volunteers for pre-planning.
Me.
Mr. Leonard? Somebody else?
Me.
And secondly, I, I have to agree with Mr. Burkhart. You know, there's, there's been comments made that we need to do the right thing. I think that I am doing the right thing up here. I, I come into this, I do the research. We all do. We all spend a lot of our own time. We don't get paid very, very much to do this. It's just, it's a very minimal amount of money to get to do this.
Yes.
We spend a lot of money on our own doing research. My goodness, I drove to Romulus to do the research on one site. You know, we do the right thing. We do care about this community. And sometimes we don't agree, and as Mr. Burkhart said, I, I think it was great that we didn't agree tonight. We all have different opinions, and, you know, in the future, we may agree. But anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, no other comments, that's item number 11, is a motion to adjourn. I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:08. We have a motion by Mr. Miller, supported by Mr. Renaud. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.